Good evening and welcome. This is the March tenth, twenty twenty fifth, meeting of the school committee. Call the meeting to order five o'clock. This meeting is being both audio and video recorded. I would ask that everyone please rise for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, roll call. Emmanuel, can you start us, please?
Daniel Garcia, student.
Valenta.
William Strother. Gregory Thompson.
Gordon Smith, superintendent of schools.
Sarah Trilio.
Pamela Blair, assistant.
Samantha Velasquez, secretary.
Okay, thank you all. We have some meetings.
Approve or take a motion, please?
Take a motion to approve the February twenty fourth, twenty twenty five executive session meeting minutes.
Second, motion made by Amy, second by William. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, nay. That carries four to zero. Thank you.
And to approve the twenty fourth, twenty twenty five regular session meeting minutes.
Okay, motion made by Amy, second by William. Any of this? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, nay. That carries four to zero. Samantha, thank you very much. Okay, committee and subcommittee communications. Emmanuel, would you like to start us out?
This past weekend was Spartana. It was a lot of fun. I was down booth all night, but I also performed. It was a lot of fun. We got a great turnout. Um, we also have the senior class is doing a pasta fundraiser for all the senior parents and all the staff. I would like to go. Um, it's fifteen dollars and that is happening on the twenty fifth from five to seven P M. And then, I don't think I have is that also this month is the music in our schools concert. So the middle school and high school. All the different music groups are going to be performing. There's two concerts. Um, one of them is the twenty second and the others, the twenty ninth, and they're both at seven P M.
Manny, is the pasta dinner here at the high school? They don't care.
Are you cooking? Better off not, right? Amy, please.
I don't have any, um, anything from a subcommittee, but I did just want to share that I was able to visit Ms. Parsi Ali's class at, at Mountain View for Read Across America Day. Um, they, it was a great environment. The students were wonderful. There was a lot going on, a lot of, um, celebrations going on in the school that week for Read Across America. So I just thought I'd share. And a great group of kids. They did an awesome, awesome job. So.
Fun.
Yeah, really fun.
Did you see the Promethean board in action?
No, I didn't.
That's pretty cool. Uh, as well, we had a couple, um, E-leaf grants last year, uh, from V-Team Boards, which is the next generation up, I guess, from, um, it's not a smart board. It's not the same brand, but, uh, anyway, it's pretty great, uh, what they can do with those.
Didn't they just get them this year?
They just got them this year.
Yeah, so they probably don't have them yet.
Last year, um.
Cause that, that was an award this year, I thought, no.
But I think it was awarded, uh, they were.
Actually gave them to them.
Approved in June, but you're right, the.
For the banquet.
The recognition at the banquet took place in February.
Cool.
What they try to do is grant applications come in during the late spring. If they can approve them by the end of June, then they might be able to actually get the money out so that we can purchase in, um, July and August, so that there's a fighting chance that whatever put in can be used the next.
Yeah, I set up the individual grants over the summer.
Okay.
Uh, Gordon gives me the list and I set up each, each one as an individual account numbers. And then I email those account numbers out to the teacher who got the award along with the principal and U C C Gordon, so everybody knows. Here's your account number, so you can start purchasing and.
Yeah.
Yeah, once, once I make sure we have the check, of course.
Cool. Anything else, Jamie? No? That's great. Thank you.
No, no news right now.
No. Sarah?
Uh, we have a collaborative meeting two weeks ago. Um, we finalized the details for the educators, support personnel, award criteria, which will be a way of, um, acknowledging the hard work of, um, some of the paraprofessionals in the district. And I think that was the main takeaway from that session.
Okay, uh, we have had two school building committees in the last two weeks. Uh, we are on pace and on budget. Uh, we actually got an opportunity to tour, uh, the new building. Uh, and you'll see that on Outcat coming up soon, cause Jamie, uh, was there with us. So look for that because it's pretty exciting. Also Pam and I went in to read to Mrs. Musette's class together. We had a great time.
Yes, we too.
Really had fun. Yeah, we didn't want to leave.
No, I loved it. Yes.
It was great. I hope anybody's back again. Okay, thank you all for that. We will move on. Opportunity for visitors to address committee, seeing none. Moving right along to five point two point one fiscal year twenty five fiscal update.
So just to remind everyone and anybody who's listening out there typically just because of the bus station this year, we've been monitoring and will be as transparent as we can to everyone out there. And I always want you to know where I see things. So, actually your report, and just as a reminder, um, this is designed as a financial update for F Y twenty five school budget as of February twenty eighth, two thousand twenty five. The report also includes your grants and revolving accounts. And if you go right to page six, that's where you'll see. I always give a write-up to you, but. Um, so on the top section of the spreadsheet is the salary side. And if you look from top down, um, not in any specific order, this was just the way they come out when I run reports. So, um, see your athletics has a, a healthy balance there, no concerns, nurses and medical staff, no concerns, clerical, custodial, all that seems, um, right on target. You will see that I highlighted, uh, paraprofessional line. We have about sixty thousand as of right now that I'm projecting will be a balance. And that's due, all of these are due to just changes that happened throughout the year. We've had, uh, vacancies. So when we have a vacancy for a couple of weeks or a month and, you know, they start adding up and then we get someone in there, but then somebody else, we've, a lot of that has been happening. Um, and then the line where Coda, S L P A, E D L L, new needs, tutors, retirement. So it's a, it's a little hodgepodge there. I, I see about a hu- three hundred thousand as of right now. That certainly can change because those, that will change because there's hourly, uh, people in there. But I do anticipate that that's going to be a line item that we'll have a balance in. Uh, the teachers line item, I'm seeing eighty three thousand dollars there. Again, those are those leave of absences and any kind of change that happens in the year. So that is, um, I just want to remind folks, like, when you're talking about a twenty one million dollar line item, eighty three thousand is very minimal for there. Um, so those are the three line items that I see on the salary side that we will most definitely have, uh, balances remaining there. Um, does anyone have any specific questions on the salary side? No. On the bottom side is your expense side of the budget. Um, and again, you'll see the equipment maintenance, that's fine, the copiers. Nothing has been really expended there yet because we have a new vendor and I think, um, Ryan is overseeing that transition. And I think we're trying to iron some things out before any payment goes to the vendor. So you will see that line change there. We could possibly have some savings there, but I don't know that yet. Um, contracted services, uh, we're doing okay there at forty seven thousand. Um, you'll see that I did highlight in green, the educational supply line, and that has two hundred nine thousand dollars. Again, that will change a little bit, um, each, each month as, as we bring this forward, because as a reminder, we do have a budget freeze on the supply lines, um, and we're only processing essential purchases right now.
That's school-based budget, Pam?
Yes.
That's collective.
That's, that's correct.
Okay.
Yep. Um, so the blue I highlighted is your out-of-district tuitions, which at this time, February twenty eighth, when I ran the reports, I'm showing a deficit of three hundred and one thousand, seven hundred thirty-fourth, uh, dollars. So I anticipate that those green line items will be able to cover that here. And again, we'll keep looking at this from month to month. Um, I am cautiously optimistic that that will, um, you know, be able to cover the out-of-district, um, tuitions. I do want you to know, I mean, I, I know I always tell you things change day to day. Just today, I, I had two emails, um, where, uh, special ed out-of-district, no, special ed testing, special testing had to be done. And it's over and above what we already have encumbered. And that's going to be, that was an additional, um, seventy five hundred dollars just today. So that's not reflected here. But again, things are always, you know, going off and coming on. And so I'll just continue to, um, show you that picture as a reminder. Our budget is thirty five million, nine nine five, one two six. We have expended twenty million, five six one, two four one. We have encumbered fourteen million, three six two, five eight, and that leaves an available balance of one million, seventy one thousand, five twenty six on February twenty eighth on the operational side of the budget. Any other questions there before we?
Are you gonna want to make the out-of-district tuitions soon?
Well, I, I thought because it's just February, I really kind of wanted to wait another month or two, so we could really see, I, I can bring, yeah, but it, it, I thought I would wait another month or two and bring transfers forward. I felt a little more confident with the, um, the actual budget lines. So the next page are your grants. Um, what do I want to bring to your attention here? So I've highlighted, uh, two in green. You know, they're all being expended down. I don't see any, uh, concerns except one that I'm going to mention to you. Uh, where I've highlighted the F Y twenty five Title II A grant, there was a three hundred and eighty-two dollar increase that we just found out about, um, a week or two ago. So that new grant amount is thirty eight thousand, one eighty-seven. Uh, the other grant that I want to bring to your attention is a brand new grant, which we did have last year. It was the, um, special ed program improvement grant, but this is a new, new fiscal year. So, but so this is a new grant, um, that you're being notified about tonight that I do want you to approve, accept. That's twenty thousand dollars and that gives us assistance with the new I E P system. Um, else do I want to bring to your attention? Um, I didn't realize this when I printed this, or I would have highlighted this as well, but under the private grants, the F Y twenty five Clee ELAP grant, I was just notified, um, from Heather Brown, um, because she does oversee that and partners with them. This grant was terminated effective, uh, February tenth, two thousand twenty-five, and that's due to the misalignment with the new United States Department of Education priorities. So I believe that they're going to try to fight back on that a little bit, so it could change, but as of right now, no expenditure's past the February tenth date. So Heather's, uh, working on that and I'll bring you more news next month when I'm sure we'll have more.
Um, just to add to that, Clee had operated on a federal grant the last two years and so put in a number of Massachusetts districts into the ELAP program. We were one of those Massachusetts districts. They have Rhode Island districts. Um, and I believe they have some of the other New England states involved in this. With changes going on, um, they were notified that their federal grants funding is, is now halted.
Right. We have not, yeah, so we have not, um, you know, we're hearing little rumors, but nothing is, um, come to fruition yet, uh, on what exactly the new administration or any new changes might be regarding the other grants we have, such as Title One or I D E A. Um, so if I hear anything, Gordon hears anything, we'll certainly bring that to your attention, but as of right now, we are not. So those are your grants, uh.
And the rest are remaining is for the playground, the twenty-sixth?
Yep, that's correct. Yes.
Is it open today?
Say that again. I don't know today. I know it was fifty-six degrees, I heard, sixty.
This week.
Yeah, don't, can we? I, I can reach out to Miss Lowdy. Yes.
Going over?
Yeah, I want to go try it out. For crying out loud, things.
Good point. So yes, um, soon that playground will be completed as soon as we really know that winter's over for good. Any other questions on the grants before we do go over? Okay. Uh, page eight is your, um, revolving accounts. Um, as a reminder, these revolving accounts roll over from one fiscal year to the next. Um, so that's why I always show you the carryover into this year and, and where we're at. Um, the only two that I'm, uh, concerned about or need to, I feel, discuss are the circuit breaker account, which is three quarters of the way down. I just wanted to, um, tell you, I am projecting an additional eight hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars, uh, in revenue. And that is the third and fourth quarter, which are each four hundred and one thousand, five hundred forty-eight dollars. That is, that does include, we had some conversation earlier, and again, I always want to be very transparent. We, um, the fourth quarter comes at the beginning of July typically, and very seldom comes at the end of June. It always, so depending on how you account it, does it go into F Y twenty-six or does it? So in talking with the town finance director, we are going to backdate that to June, so it will be considered a rollover. So I do project at this point in time that it will be four hundred and two thousand, fifty dollars that will be rolling over.
But we didn't do that last year.
The fourth quarter went.
Into twenty-five.
That's correct.
So we have five quarters.
That's right. Which is why you.
Have one left over.
Yes.
That's why. That's gonna burn us next year then, right? Cause we don't have the first quarter in, oh yeah, we will still have the rollover, well, the four hundred almost.
Quarters, and that's what I'm projecting out in anything I do. And again, I just always want to be very transparent on that fourth quarter, because it can get a little tricky. But, um, we are going to always accrue it back to where it belongs, where it was meant to be, if that makes sense. Okay. Um, so the other one is your school choice account. Um, I do anticipate that we have additional revenue of a hundred and forty-one thousand, six hundred thirty-five dollars coming in. And that's the February to June payments, each month twenty eight thousand, three hundred twenty-seven dollars. So as of right now, unless something were to change that I'd need to go into that account or come to you to, uh, ask permission to do that. Um, I am projecting a four hundred and forty-one thousand, one hundred forty-five dollar, uh, balance there. So again, I just want to remind everybody, it's important to remember that the balances provided are a snapshot in time and then. Thank you. Any questions on any of those accounts?
Looks like the, um, mobile tech insurance is on pace because we have been ten point six and we spent eleven point four, so.
Yeah, so we kind of, we, we kind of talked about that, that it was top-heavy at the beginning, to get all the revenue in, everybody's buying into this. Funded insurance program, so nothing was happening right away, but now things are happening. And yes, you see that level off there. Exactly what Ryan said would happen.
Okay, any questions for Pam on the financial update?
I just would like you to, um.
Approve the grant?
Approve, yeah, that's the.
Or accept it.
Mentioned exactly, the new grant and also that additional. That new grant amount.
Thousand.
The twenty thousand dollar new grant and the, uh, three hundred and eighty-two dollar increase in the Title II A. The first highlighted green one and the second highlighted, I think.
Oh, the three hundred and eighty-two dollars. Yep, I gotcha.
I'd need to probably bring that to your attention.
Motion to approve the Title II A grant increase of three hundred and eighty-two dollars for fiscal year twenty-five. Add it all together?
Yeah, we're just gonna accept.
Oh.
Instead of approve.
Make a motion to.
Minor detail.
Grant, sorry.
You can burn the other.
And.
Please.
Um, additionally to accept the spend improvement, the new grant for fiscal year twenty-five.
In twenty thousand dollars.
In the amount of twenty thousand dollars.
Motion made by Amy. Second by William, discussions. All in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed, nay. That carries.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, moving on, we have discussion on the F Y twenty-six budgets.
I'll start that again. So, um, we wanted to continue our conversation and, uh, remind everybody of exactly where we're at. Um, a majority of us did go to the, uh, the town council and school meeting, point meeting on February twenty-fifth and, uh, Gordon and I and, uh, the school committee presented this one pager to the town council, again, always trying to be transparent and answer their questions and have them better understand a school department budget, because we are very unique, um, to the other departments, I believe. So, um, after updating the, all the contracted obligations for F Y twenty-six, as well as increasing the special ed budget lines, we wanted them to know a level services budget was an increase of approximately three million dollars or eight point five seven percent increase. We also acknowledged that the past three years, the school department has requested on average, a three point nine three percent increase for level services. So we wanted to put it into the chart and give them a visual, which I believe that they appreciated. Um, I think most of them are visual people just like myself. So, you know, I wanted to, to point out some things. Our foundation enrollment, um, has gone down. Our number is two four six eight, I think. Thousand four hundred sixty-eight students. I believe that's gone down fifty-four students. Is that correct, Gordon? Um, our school budget request for the level services would be thirty-nine million, eighty thousand, five hundred eighty-four dollars. That would be that increase of three million, eighty-five, four five eight. Um, chapter seventy. The end, chapter seventy revenue coming to the town for F Y twenty-six is fifteen million, I better put these glasses on. Uh, fifteen million, four eighty-four, eight three six. That is the minimum state aid increase of seventy-five dollars per pupil. So they take that seventy-five times that two four six eight, and it's just an increase this year over last year of a hundred and eighty-five thousand, one hundred dollars. That's just a one point two percent increase in the, um, chapter seventy. What does that mean for the town if we were to stay in this level services budget request? That's a huge number for the town. We recog.
It's not a little service.
I'm sorry, but, no, this is, this would be.
The blue one's not.
I'm still. No, no, thank you for making sure I'm saying it correctly. I just wanted to be clear to the town council that our need really was three million, really is three million dollars. And what would that do to the town? We recognize that that two point nine million dollars is not an attainable number for us to request from the town. So, what I also just would like to mention is I always review these, um, chapter seventy is not increasing the way it has in the past. And I believe that has to do with this whole Student Opportunity Act and them trying to, um, change many things in the formula, and one of them is putting more onto the towns. So, you know, when I started to review, in F Y nineteen, chapter seventy increase was six point two percent. Then, then COVID came, so nothing was normal about twenty, twenty-one or twenty-two. Um, but in F Y twenty-three, it was a seven percent increase. In F Y twenty-four, fifteen point four percent increase. F Y twenty-five, one point seven. F Y twenty-six, one point two. So our, that percentage is coming, is coming down. And the town's percentage is coming up. And so this is just part of that perfect storm behind the scenes that I always refer to now and what's happening. So what do we do at that point? Um, we have, uh, strategized on how to reduce the level services budget request, um, with items listed below, which, um, Mr. Smith is going to take you through. He's the speaker to talk on those items.
So these are items that, um, all of you have seen before. And we've worked not only with all of you, but we worked with the leadership team and, um, have also worked with our, um, teachers union to put this together. Uh, and so the top part is looking at how do we free up revenue in next year's budget? And, and you've heard me go through these before, but just so that, um, people may not have seen this, know what, um, what we've looked at so far. Taking the rollover, um, of school choice money that Mrs. Blair talked about just a few moments ago, taking three hundred and fifty thousand of that and using it as, um, sort of a starting point, if you will, for F Y twenty-six, for the F Y twenty-six budget. Taking our curriculum renewal cycle, which has been in our operational budget now for a number of years. Um, and when a department or departments that are in that cycle get to the purchasing year after they've done their study and discussion and identified materials, um, which they want to purchase, uh, we have eighty thousand dollars allocated, um, in the operational budget each year for that. Next year, not this fiscal year, but next fiscal year, we would freeze that, freeze curriculum renewal. We have two, um, memoranda of understanding with, um, the E L A. One around contractual individual professional development money, which, um, would freezing that brings about a hundred and twenty-six thousand, five hundred. And then another one looking specifically at, um, extra days worked by, um, counselors. And so if you reduce the days worked by half, that brings about twenty-six thousand dollars. Then it's looking at, um, software licensure, which, um, as we go forward into the future, seems to ever be increasing. And, um, seeing where we can cut down there, that's about ten thousand dollars. Uh, last meeting, I believe, the school committee voted to expand school choice for next year by twenty seats. So this would be new, uh, school choice enrollment at the sixth grade level and the ninth grade level. And that would introduce an, an additional hundred thousand, um, as well as, uh, utilizing some of the rollover, um, or existing money that would have come in for, um, school choice based on the thirty-eight students currently enrolled. Uh, so that's another hundred thousand. And then looking at athletic fees and for the first time in over at least twenty-two years, raising it from a hundred and forty-nine dollars to a hundred and ninety-nine dollars, that's thirty thousand dollars. So all polled, that's redirecting or, um, figuring out how to raise eight hundred and twenty-two thousand, five hundred dollars. Then unfortunately we get to, uh, the reduction part of this exercise. And we do have a series of retirements, not as many as we've had in years past. And so three of those retirement positions would go unfilled. And then we have three positions currently that, um, due to lack of enrollment or, um, other reasons, we should be able to reduce without too much impact to teaching and learning. Overall, the, the goal of all of this is to reduce impact of teaching and learning as much as possible. Um, and so six positions total would be reduced, and that's another two hundred and twenty-four thousand, nine hundred and sixty-six dollars. And then that brings our, it reduces our request to the town by one point two nine million dollars. Um, which we feel is pretty significant. Uh, and I do, I think that it was well received by the town council when we presented all of this back on.
It is worth noting that the first five of the one through eight, we will not have available next year. So that's about five hundred and seventy-five thousand that we're gonna have to find somewhere else. Fund some other way. And, um, there's a lot of free cash, so hopefully they can fund the whole budget. It's worth. Fighting for it, hopefully.
And so at the.
But.
On the bottom of that spreadsheet is where I, that same, um, chart. And plugged in what the request is of the school committee, again, having a visual so they could really see. So our school budget would be thirty-seven, seven, eight, nine, eight, one, five. That's an increase of one million, seven, nine, four, six, eight, nine, which is really, I said, four point nine nine percent, so a five percent increase. Um, again, what does that do to the town? That would be, uh, local contribution increase of one point six million dollars, um, over prior year. That we would, from this, um, town council.
And I think Mr. Blair put out your, it's the updated chart in the packet. We had a chart that was not as current. Um, and so it might be out of order, but I think given, we just mentioned that our budget, level one budget request that has been presented to well, town manager and at least discussed a little bit at the town council level. Um, so these are districts that have responded to, I think it's on the listserv, that's a survey on the listserv for, uh, school business managers. And, uh, we redid the chart, Mrs. Blair redid the chart to reflect sort of the highest requests that are coming from districts. So as you can see, the highest request is ten point two five percent. So certainly, as you go down and you see where we fall, we fall somewhere in the middle. Um, with twenty-seven districts who have responded to this, you have more than twenty-seven districts, obviously, in the Commonwealth, more than fifty-one who have responded. But we fall right in the middle with that five percent. So it's certainly not out of the norm of what school districts are requesting and need. And, um, unfortunately, I think many districts across the Commonwealth are in reduction scenarios, uh, as we are.
But those initial requests in comparison to what was approved, seventy-five percent of those were cut in half.
Correct. Yeah, no, I think they're in reduction. Uh, it's just, it's similar to the idea of, you know, we needed eight point five seven percent. Stay level services. Right now we're five percent. So you could put ourselves to, hasn't been approved yet.
But where does the difference between budget percent increase at almost five percent and local contribution request increase at almost eight percent?
Chapter seventy is one point two percent. If that kept pace with the four point nine, it would also.
Far right.
Yes.
And how come up here, we were talking earlier, it was fourteen percent?
Cause we still have the, uh, additional.
Nine million dollar.
One and a half million, yeah.
Right, but I thought we were just saying if it's five percent, how can it also be eight percent?
It's five percent increase through our budget, but because.
Yes.
Chapter seventy has not kept pace with five, if, if chapter seventy was five percent also, then the town contribution would be five.
Right.
Because chapter seventy is only one point two, and keep pace, that cranks up the town's portion.
That's what I'm saying. So we're not really asking for five, we're really asking for seven.
Well.
That's the effect on the town.
Right.
That's what I'm saying. It's, it's up.
Yes.
Five.
Percent increase.
But that result.
Effect in the town is one point six million dollars.
Yes.
Yes.
Absolutely. They're a good point.
Yeah.
And that's why we went to the chart that you're seeing the last few years, I think at least five years.
Right.
And discussing.
Yeah, no, I was just clarifying, that's all.
Yeah, and we try to never correlate it to chapter seventy, because if we did, this is the year we'd get burned. Right? So if you can say, well, we got, uh, two years ago, we got that huge two million dollars, well, we should get it all. Well, then that would mean this year we should only get a hundred and eighty-five.
We actually took a reduction that year.
Right.
Didn't need.
Cause we didn't. Yeah, there's a reduction in the town's contribution.
Right.
We should emphasize that again, too.
And that, that's happened, uh, historically a few times. If you look at the ten-year chart.
Chapter seventies over.
Where we, chapter seventy has been a significant increase and then that therefore reduced the towns, uh, from the previous year, if not reduced, you know, is under one percent.
Right. Right. If we changed chapter seventy all the time, we'd be cutting and adding, cutting and adding every year.
Should be ridiculous. Right. Be very, very difficult.
Right. That's why we can't correlate it.
And that's why you're hearing more and more about these, all the different professional groups coming together, because it seems there's a lot of change that needs to happen, both with chapter seventy formula, as well as special ed with circuit breaker reimbursement. There are more and more of these. I've been in three webinars in the last week where they're looking for people's feedback and to get together and come together to send this message to the legislation, because we can't, no district, we're not alone. There's more of us than there's that are not dealing with this. We cannot sustain what's happening here, so there's got to be change somewhere. And we also talked about, you know, looking internally. We know that we need to do business a little bit different as well. Our our children are different, the challenges are different. We're looking at special ed on how we can do things differently, but it's going to take some time. But those conversations are happening, which I think is really important. So what I wanted to tell you is I did put that into munis, and this is out of order as well, but I should have put page four next. This is how it is in munis, the budget that you asked me to bring forward, your level one budget. So I wanted you to see the different categories. This is typically how the town manager submits it to the town council. So I wanted to show you that, so it would be very familiar to you. I do want to say that on contracted services, the ten point six percent increase, that the bulk of that is transportation behind the scenes from that three point seven million. One point nine million is transportation costs alone. And then you see a reduction in the supplies and materials of sixty percent reduction. Well, that's because I had to take that five hundred and fifty thousand dollars of school choice for next year and reduce down my operating budget lines. I had to do that on all the supply lines. So that's why you see that huge reduction there. It's because of that five hundred and fifty thousand that we just go and explain. And lastly, the other expenses, that's one million, that's a thirty percent increase. And behind the scenes, that's two point eight million of that three point one million is out of district tuitions. So two point eight.
Twenty percent, yeah.
Is, yes. So the budget we have presented is thirty seven million, seven, eight, nine, eight, one, five. The other thing I just want to mention, when the town brings it forward in their budget packet, you can also then see a line that says school committee stipend. So they usually add that on, and that's the ten, you know, the total, ten thousand six hundred fifty, I believe, is the number. So I just wanted to make mention, if you see a different number at the bottom, that's why.
That hasn't changed in.
That's correct. That has not changed in many.
Yep.
Years.
And the two point eight million for out of district placement, is it possible to get then a list of programs and the services that those programs are providing?
Schools? Is that what you mean?
Yes.
So when you say the program, what they're.
Like if there, if there's an out of district placement for, let's just say, three students for one particular.
Yeah.
Program.
Yeah.
What is the name of the program? How much does that program cost? And what are the students receiving there that they cannot receive?
I'll need some help with the special ed with that. And I rattled off, these are Bay Center, Valley View, Willie Rock, White Oak, Denver, Mary, Valley West, Hillcrest, Eagle Hill, LPVAC, and some, and Comersing. I don't know if I got that right, the Creative Child, uh, thank you, Perkins and Gengris, those are. So yes, I can certainly tell you, oh, and I I have a listing, and it's right on the OSD's website, but I'd be more than happy to print it off for everyone and share that. It's of all, OSD has to every year approve the annual amount for tuition. So it's right there on their website. So there's different, where it gets tricky for me. I don't know the programs so well, so you know, they might have four different programs, so I would just see them. I saw, I'll need a little help there. So yes, I can certainly do that.
Your point, if we're trying to think about things differently, if there's a central theme underlying why all these students are going out of district.
And some of them are, you know, disabilities that they have, that they need specialized services. But we can certainly talk about that very broadly. I never want to identify and, you know.
But just.
Just an overview, and some of these, like a May Center might be up like seventy five thousand, others a hundred and fifty six thousand. But then there's a transportation component on top of that. And that's where, over, you know, this year, it's it's been, it's been escalating.
Yes.
And then not having the other funding, again, it's just that perfect storm, inflation, out of district costs, IEP needs, transportation, just all of it together. So yes, I will get something together to show you how that all plays together. You're welcome. I'll finish here with. No, I wanted you to see that. And I guess in the other pages, oh, and then the next page after that, on page five. I figured you might just be curious, because I can run reports differently in munis, I thought, oh, location, they might be interested. How much money are we going to spend at Meadow Brook and Maple Shade, Mountain View? And so I just thought that you as a committee would just be interested. It's the same budget number, it's just run a different way.
And that's with the six less employees.
Yes, that's.
Which is why the high school is in a negative.
That's correct.
Position.
Yes, that's correct. So I went into each of the individual budget lines to reduce down each of those line items that have already been discussed, that close to one point three million dollars. And we also made that very clear to town council, and I think they were extremely respectful of what the committee had already done, knowing that that alone is already a huge impact on us. So we'll see where these conversations go. We're certainly cautiously optimistic. You know, I wanted to remind everybody, they're still moving pieces. I'm sure on the town side, they still have moving pieces as well, which is why sometimes until we get closer to year end, there's just some things we just won't know. One of them, just as a reminder, is the circuit breaker reimbursement. You know, I took, put down the bottom of the page, will we qualify for extraordinary relief this fiscal year? We won't know until sometime in April. A few years back, we got a three hundred and forty three thousand dollar debt problem. Wonderful. That would so help us this year, which would roll into helping us next year. But I don't know that, because there's certain formulas behind the scene, and it's not something I know a timeline. I've tried to do some research, but there's formulas and eligible expenses, and that goes above that threshold that we've talked about.
Specifically apply for that?
Oh, yes.
And we will.
Oh, yes.
And when does that all take place?
And when.
Now, Gordon. March is when they.
Getting everything organized.
On their relief and then the regular circuit breaker.
And so the regular circuit breaker, we won't know that amount until that that claim is done after the year ends. So that's July. So so what I've done now is I've just speculated that we're going, I'm using the same exact number.
But we actually do claim during this school year.
Or I thought the claim was done in July.
I believe, I believe they let us know in July.
What the?
Because you have to have all of.
The amount would be July.
I think they do it in June.
I'll check on that. I I thought it was July, so I very well could be incorrect on that. Let you know that information. So I don't know what that exact number is, and because we won't know till later, I'm using the same number as this year. That seems safe to me, seemed conservative and the right way to go. And again, that is four hundred and thirty one thousand five forty eight times the four quarters. That's where I come up with that revenue number. So as of right now, I anticipate the FY twenty five ending balance and circuit breaker will be four hundred and two thousand dollars. And try to project things out, just so that you know, I also project that in FY twenty six, the rolling over of approximately four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, just trying to use what I, information I have now to project out. So I wanted to remind you of that. The other thing was the school choice history. We do have the twenty students coming in, and that's the hundred thousand that Gordon spoke about. I wanted you to know in the spreadsheet here, adding twenty students in FY twenty six, using the, I use the minimum amount, because that's five thousand dollars per student. And that's another area, just saying, that has not been increased in, I don't even know how many years. I don't know. I feel like it's been that way for fifteen plus years. Clearly, it takes more. So that might be one of, one of these coalitions might talk about as well. But so five thousand dollars times the total that I see right now of our current thirty seven students plus the twenty, the fifty seven students is why I said two hundred and eighty five thousand dollars. Just as a reminder, there is a special ed component increment behind the scenes, depending on the services. There could be special ed revenue that comes in there as well with the school choice. But I feel, again, being conservative, that our lowest amount that we will get will be the two hundred and eighty five thousand dollars. That very well could end up being, you know, over three hundred thousand, low three, low three hundred. So that's another area that has a little bit of moving. So that's where we're at right now. I don't know if I missed anything, Gordon, or if anybody has any questions.
I did look again, the town council has a level one budget on their agenda tomorrow night, so I will go and see what they say. I don't know if they're going to talk much about it, but it is on the agenda.
I thought it was due to the town council at April first, so maybe this is.
I think they're doing level one discussions with all the departments, the town manager is this week. So maybe they're discussing.
Yeah, it's under financial matters, subject number one, level one FY twenty six draft budget. We'll see.
Then we're waiting after that.
Yeah, we'll see. I I think we should be close, because there's over two million dollars over the minimum or the what they like to keep in free cash. And there's all kinds of money everywhere, so I think it's worth fighting for it, because there are a lot on the line. But yeah, we'll wait and see what they say. Any other questions for Pam? Okay, thank you, Pam. Very thorough on the topic. Okay, next up, we have the superintendent's mid-cycle formative self-assessment and evidence report.
So continuing basically the discussion last week, that all the mid-cycle reputations in the shared folder, I had put other examples of evidence, but then obviously this is a comprehensive document which captures both the SMART goals, but also then individual goals and where we stand at the mid-cycle, if you will. Happy to answer additional questions. Highlight anywhere that people would like more highlighting on? It's poor sentence, I apologize.
You've been busy, Gordon.
Been busy.
Everybody's been busy, yeah.
The MSBA work takes up a good, I don't think. You know, I I don't necessarily realize it until I sit down and do.
Yeah.
So you have the project, which is, you know, it's going really well. But we also accelerated repair roof project for Maple Shade, and right now that's sitting in basically a task completion step. And all of that has been submitted as of last week to the MSBA. So hopefully, we will now be moving forward into some type of project funding agreement for schematic design and feasibility study for the roof project.
Cool. Mrs. Santinella had asked me about the modulars. Are we with that?
For the last, last, I discussed it with Mr. Fenny, we were hoping to be out to bid this month, but I've not gotten an update on that.
Okay, hopefully that gets going. Questions, comments on the mids? There's nothing else, I'd take a motion to. I don't know, what are we going to do? Accept that, approve it?
Go on, fine.
Yeah.
To accept the superintendent's self-assessment evidence.
Made by Amy, second by William. Any discussion? You can say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed nay, that carries four to zero. Good work, Gordon. Thank you. Okay, next up. We have revision to the twenty four, twenty five code of conduct.
So in your package, you have printouts, if you will. One that looks like this with no red color in it is the current area within our code of conduct. Basically, pages twenty five, twenty, page twenty six. And it deals with due process, the process itself, rights and the expectations. The second of which is the proposed amendment, which is in red. So all areas in red have been revised. Give you a background of this.
Crazy.
Both the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education and our attorneys had reviewed our code of conduct. Two years ago, we went through tiered focus monitoring and approved the original. Then in a situation that dropped up, that then an inquiry went to the Department of Elementary, Secondary Education around due process and most specifically around oral and written notice of the parents' hearing. And ultimately, all we needed to do was to add in that written notice. And really, all the scenarios that you see of the hearing needs to happen in addition to oral. And in the original copy, it is mentioned, but it's not mentioned under the, specifically the area of due process on that very first page, where it's capturing number of the sections, thirty seven H, thirty seven H and a half, and then it later goes into thirty seven H and three quarters. It seems like a lot, basically in working with the attorneys, what this does, it does more than Desi's asking for. And so that we're not in any way taking any steps a not being transparent with everything that needs to happen. All we did was we, each section of thirty seven H, thirty seven H itself, seven H and a half, thirty seven H and three quarters, put all the due process rights under each one. So that's what the red is. Certainly, if you look through, you'll see a number of times oral and written notice regarding potential with regard to any type of short term and certainly any type of long term suspension. So from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education standpoint, this would be more than asked for. But it seemed to make sense as we were discussing it with the attorney that rather than confuse anybody, because it gets confusing when you start talking about thirty seven H, thirty seven H and a half, and thirty seven H and three quarters. Simply put, thirty seven H, you know, specifically with weapons, substances, banned substances, controlled substances, and assault. Thirty seven H and a half deals with anyone, unfortunately, who has been charged with a felony. And then thirty seven H and three quarters pretty much handles every other possible area that might be, end up in a suspension. And it's really thirty seven H quarters that a few years ago went under some revision with some new changes to the law, and that's where you see things, which we did actually have in our original. Looking at different alternatives to suspensions, especially short term suspension. As all of these sections talk about extremely severe, that not only is a suspension possible, but expulsion is still possible. Which actually was a big change in, when revisions happened a few years ago. Really, expulsion was no longer talked about as much as it used to be, I would say, ten years ago, fifteen years ago. Which I think is a good thing, because we're not necessarily in the business of separating ourselves from our students. However, there are some really serious situations that are highlighted in the different sections of this law. Hopefully that made sense.
It does. We're going to kill a lot of trees, but necessary, I suppose.
Basically, we have to, with your approval, then message this out that a revision has happened to the code of conduct, and then we'll post that on the website as well.
Where is the language around students with disabilities? Is it just that last?
So that goes further in. So that goes further in here.
Okay.
And we did not get asked to change anything in there.
Okay, so like page 25 of the old policy?
That's where it actually.
That's where these, I was just curious, because we went, are there parts on page 26 that are now embedded? Or did this, or did the old policy just, did you just provide us more information than what was actually updated?
So the old policy spread out the information, I think, much.
Okay.
And so that's why we went with this, and then um the department didn't see anything uh page in the current code of conduct. Um, disciplinary action relative to students with disabilities starts on page 24, maybe 25.
Okay.
And then um continues, and in the review with the attorneys, they didn't ask us to change anything.
And then there's just um inconsistencies in in grammar before we approve.
Sure.
Number on page 22, number six, Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, I would assume that should be capitalized. It appears three times in that paragraph.
That's actually the lawyer bringing it back.
Uh, number seven, that's something that means the commissioner is like the commissioner of education, that should probably capitalize as well. And then I think it's just inconsistent. Um.
Seven, you said?
Yeah, it was a number seven to the far right.
Thank you.
Um, if we are capitalizing superintendent, and if we are capitalizing principal, it should be consistent throughout.
Yes.
And 23, 24.
Could it be capitalized?
Either way, we just, we do both.
Yeah.
23, 24, 26. Have it as capitalized, whereas the other pages don't. That's principal superintendent. And then page 24. Number two, just very specific to parent. Would that be broader to say family or guardian?
Yeah, I would, I would say.
Guardian, probably, yeah.
And that's just where it really stood out, because a parent is mentioned multiple times in that number. I don't know if I missed it somewhere else. Yeah, there is.
Right, anywhere it says parent is.
I think we should add.
Guardian.
Parents, parents, and or guardian. So we can do a a full change everywhere. Yeah, because I think the rest of the code of conduct does actually reference parents and or guardian. I was trying not to change anything the attorneys gave us.
No, that's.
But at this point, this is certainly becomes something we all in endorse, and so we made uh, it feels they can improve.
And the old portion has uh are capitalized and non-capitalized. But that's.
Put my last name next to it. Capital.
There you go. Okay, any other comments on that? So I would entertain a motion to approve the change to the code of conduct with the amended amendments aforementioned. Motion made by William.
And.
Second by Amy. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed nay. Zero.
Make those revisions, and we will first send it to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. And then we'll make an announcement out to the entire district.
You're just gonna email that out or?
Yeah, it'll be a, uh, we'll post it to the website once Desi's received it. Yeah, and then um we'll make an announcement uh in an email, give a link as well, and you can attach it.
Okay, next order of business, super exciting because it means summer's coming. Yay! We have the Rotary approval of the 2025 Rotary Club Summer Concert Series.
So this is um a reduction, quite a reduction from the, the amount of concerts they used to have here at the high school. We know that obviously with the building project going on, um, they're unable to use their, the fields as they used to. So this is looking at Maple Shade, um, and it's looking to, excuse me, after the school year gets out, the setup of equipment on the 21st and 22nd of June, and then have two concerts. June 25th with a rain date of the 26th, and a second concert on July 3rd with a rain date um of July, uh, actually no rain date on that one, I apologize. Um, just the laser light show would conclude that concert. I think the laser light show is in place of the fireworks, um, because we no longer have um
Something.
Shoot up fireworks. Uh, checking with the town recreation department, there's no conflict with any activities they're running in late June, early July at Maple Shade. Generally, they don't use Maple Shade um till the fall. I'm sorry.
Not even like the softball field?
Uh, well, this would be just a Maple Shade. Uh, I think they use the softball fields at Berchland.
Hmm. Younger ones normally use the Maple Shade field.
In the summer, though, right now in the summer, yeah.
Yeah.
Wouldn't rec know that, though?
Say one more time?
Wouldn't rec know that?
It might, I don't know. I don't think. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, maybe they don't have their.
Yeah.
Like I think the younger, like U8, even baseball might use that field.
I doubt they'll put it on the field itself, because they put the.
Yeah.
Cell. Um.
Yeah, it might not be.
Yeah, but if we check with rec, that's the best we can.
Yeah, that's the best they can do.
And it's unfortunate, it's only two concert series, but once the uh high school's done, hopefully gets back up and running to normal and the fireworks come back.
When this gets um submitted back to them for approval, are we going to give them a copy of the advertising policies so that they're aware as well?
We could certainly give them the advertising. Any group that wants to advertise still would have to come through.
Yeah, but we use like the band shell in and of itself.
Okay.
We discussed how there was advertising embedded within the band shell.
Yes.
Hmm?
Yes.
So if that's gonna be there, then rather than have them. And we should follow.
They haven't asked about any of that here.
They probably don't know.
Right.
Right, because we haven't asked before.
Mm-hmm. So, but if they're going to set the same band shell up and have.
I will send them the new policy.
Concession stands and all of that, then.
You know, yeah, they usually have a bunch of. Okay. Yeah. Any other questions on the concert series? If not, I would take a motion to approve. Make a motion to approve the 2025 Rotary Club Summer. Motion by William. Second by Amy. Discussion, all in favor, say aye. Aye, those opposed nay, that carries.
Company and get them the information on that.
Um, the one other thing I wanted to bring up is all of this paper that we get every week. I'm on a mission for the end of my chairmanship to cut down on that. Would folks be opposed to getting the package down to like a 12-page package and the rest getting digitally? If we're able to do it. So like the big stuff that we got today, like say the change in this, the change in the code of conduct. We can get that electronically just as easy as in paper, or is everybody stuck on paper?
I prefer paper, but that's just me.
I know. I've just killed a lot of trees as I've been here over the years, and it seems antiquated. And the reality is, we looked at the piece of paper for, I don't know, eight seconds, and then we flip it, and I just feel like we could do better, but if folks are against it, then.
I'm fine with digital.
Can we try it, Sarah? Works?
Yeah.
Be willing to bring. You could print it. That's true.
Well, everyone has a Chromebook, is that correct?
Yes.
Sure.
All right, so maybe we'll work on it next time around and see how it goes.
Sarah wants it printed. Why couldn't we do it for her and
Yeah.
Just see.
Yeah, yeah.
And then maybe I'll wanna go back, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
I don't print it.
Pretty lengthy. I don't think you want to print.
I.
I mean, this one's not like, like all the presentation.
Them all, like I like having them. I like.
That saying is similar to what.
I don't mind. I'll keep.
Okay.
Not a big deal.
With that, we have reached the end of our meeting. If there's no other business, I would raise a motion, very please, so, motion made by William.
Okay.
Second by Amy, discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed nay, that carries four to zero.